Oh, there we go. Okay, so just to remind everybody, Public Works is now made up of two different departments, the Operations Department. We have a group of very fine superintendents that assist Brian and I in making the operations and utilities department function, and then a crew of Public Works admin. Historically, when I've done these budget presentations, we've basically gone department by department and looked at capital expenses, and it's probably akin to death by PowerPoint. It's pretty dry material, not terribly interesting. So I guess I'll just tell the group, so when you look at Public Works, we basically do two things. We're either providing a service of some sort or we're maintaining something. So I have a series of slides, and if you want to look, look through the slides at your leisure. Basically, I've lined out, you know, kind of our priorities, capital purchases, and things that we've done over the past few years. And like I said, most of the, you know, in order to maintain or provide a service, you need equipment. So we're either, you know, updating old equipment, buying new, more efficient equipment, or something along those lines. So I put together a few slides for some of our bigger, long-term priorities, and I'll get into those in a little more detail. So the first is NOS. So we've been hearing NOS a lot for the last 20-plus, 20-plus years. So the South Prairie Reservoir and Hydraulic Control Structure is substantially complete. That's the large tank that you see, you know, about seven miles south of Minot. The Snake Creek Pump Station Project, the raw water intake that is currently under construction, they're doing some demo work, and that's expected to be complete by 2025. The big part of the puzzle is the NOS Biota Plant. That's the large facility you see being constructed on the east side of Highway 83 on the south side of Max. Working with, so biota treatment is a federal obligation through the Boundary Waters Treaty. So the Bureau of Recclamation is responsible for constructing that facility and operating it. They don't have staff to operate it. So through working with the Bureau, the state, and us, the city of Minot is going to be the entity that's responsible for operating the biota treatment facility. So we have a signed MOA, basically assigns all the responsibilities between the Bureau, the state, and us, who has to do what. And we're currently working on hiring and training some employees. We have to buy some vehicles so that we can transport people back and forth, and then we'll have to buy all the equipment and tools. And all these expenses are supposed to be federally funded. We're currently working through budgets with the Bureau. The federal budgeting process, I thought ours is pretty long and arduous, but theirs brings it to a whole nother level. The thing I put here on the bottom is probably the big takeaway. We need to get staff trained and ready to treat water that we don't have experience treating using a technology we haven't used before. So there's, you know, we've historically, since 1950s, have been a lime softening plant here in North Dakota, or in Minot. And the biota treatment facility is different. But down there, now we have to meet some stricter rules and regulations with surface water treatment rules. So it comes with some additional reporting, some additional operational steps and complications. But one of the things that's going to happen, the biota facility is going to be substantially complete sometime this summer. So what we're working on is we have a pipeline from Minot all the way down to Max. So water is supposed to be flowing from south to north, but we're actually going to take some of our well water, and we're going to pump it south to Max. And we can fill some detention ponds and basically put about 10 million gallons of water into that system, and it'll give us an opportunity for our staff to basically operate that facility offline. We can basically run water in a circle. We can test out all of the chemical treatment systems, the UV and filters and all this stuff, and basically kind of get our staff acclimated in an offline mode, which is really great. It's not something that generally happens. We just did a major remodel at the water treatment plant, and really, like, once it's done and ready, you just have to flick the switch and see if it works. And so we're going to avoid that. We'll be able to run this plant offline for a few months, waiting on Snake Creek or Lake Sakakawea water to come into Minot. So, fingers crossed, knock on wood, do whatever you got to do, but we're looking like Lake Sakakawea should be showing up in Minot about mid-2025. That's what we're gearing up for, and that's what we're preparing for. So, just a little history, you know, this project, the first project broke ground in 2002. NOS dates back to the early 1980s, I believe. So this project's been in the works for many, many years. We actually began serving interim water to the city of Berthold. They were the first customer on the NOS system back in 2008. But some of the numbers, we've invested about $218 million to date. We have another 106 under contract, and we're probably about 100 to 125 million remaining to be spent on some different projects. So the delays with litigation has ballooned the cost of NOS. The original estimate of one of the NOS options back in the late 90s was $125 million. So inflation, escalators, complications. So the grand total is probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $452 million. When you look at that, NOS is going to serve about 75,000 people. So when you divide 452 million by 75,000, you get a cost of about $6,000 per served connection. That's really not bad. You look at rural water systems, you know, they can have served connection costs, you know, 18 to $25,000 per customer. They have to run long distances to connect one customer. So then as a reminder, Minot has a sales tax, and we're providing 35% cost share to the NOS project. Most River Flood Control. This will be a big priority next year and for many years to come. I always think it's a good idea, whenever we talk about flood control, to remind people what we're trying to do. This is basically the inundation zone from 2011, and this is approximately what the FEMA floodplain is going to look like once the new firm maps go effective. This is what we're working to achieve, and it's many projects, many steps, and many parts and pieces to make this happen. We're currently working on Milestone One. That is, it's basically on the west side of Minot, north of the Suris River. So it goes from basically Terracita-Valejo all the way out past 13th Street Northeast. So we have Terracita-Valejo, Phases 1, 2, and 3 are complete. Phase 5 is way out, the East Project along railway, that is currently under construction, and Phase 4 is in design still. We do have a $65 million federal commitment on MI4. It's been hung up in design for probably the better part of about two years. We, you know, the Sixth Street underpass, you have a convergence of the two railroads plus Amtrak. So there's a lot of difficulties on building a channel and bridging a channel with railroad. So we've been through many iterations. We've hit on a design that appears to be appeasing everybody, so we're doing some final checks on hydraulics to make sure we have the channel width that we need and that we can move forward. So I'm thinking, you know, probably in the June timeframe, there's probably going to be a public presentation at council to kind of get the public up to date. There's probably some additional acquisitions that we're going to have to look at that we didn't initially anticipate. So we'll be coming back to council to talk about those soon. Milestone Two, we started some design work on Milestone Two back in 2001. So MI6, that is the phase of levee and flood wall that'll go from basically downtown over to Third Street, under the Third Street Bridge, and then over to the west entrance to Roosevelt Park. That is going to, bids will open on that on May 17th. So that project is going to forbid, and that project will start, begin construction this summer. MI7, that is the levee and flood wall segments that go through Roosevelt Park. That open, bids open for that this Friday, May 10th. We just awarded MI8 and 9. MI8 is the Burdick Bridge replacement and realignment, and then MI9 is the Volker Road that basically goes from the Burdick Bridge south, ties into high ground down by the old Cloverdale Plant. Then additionally, Bar Engineering was awarded a contract. So back in, if everybody remembers back in 2011, you know, there was this fast track to get the preliminary engineering report out so people could determine, you know, whether they're in a buyout area, you know, what was going to happen. So there were a lot, you know, that was a very high-level view to give us an idea. So now that we've designed multiple projects, we've done a ton of modeling, we have some more certainty in how things are responding as we build features. So we're going to revisit the PER. Bar Engineering's going to do some more modeling. We're going to do some geotech engineering. There are some segments that, where levee is drawn on a map, but when you start looking at the finances, it probably makes more sense to buy out some rural neighborhoods versus building ring levees around them. There's some things that are on that the Corps is probably not going to approve for us to construct. So we're going to revisit the PER and do probably, you know, bring all these projects up to about a 20%, 30% design, so we have a better idea of what we're getting ourselves into going forward. And just as a reminder, during the last session of legislature, there is legislative intent to provide 76.1 million for the next five biennium. We've been approaching legislature each session, trying to get them to ramp that up. We have the funding. We can cost share a higher allocation from the state, but this is what they've given us for now, and every two years, we'll continue to go down and ask for more. Cast iron pipe replacement. As if NOS and flood control aren't enough, this is a very large, large project as well. So the map you see here, this is basically all the water lines in Minot. Everything in red is cast iron. So we have about 80 miles of cast iron pipes still in the ground. It's undersized, it's poor condition, it leads to poor fire flows on hydrants and water quality concerns. You know, the water leaves the plant, it's nice and clear and clean, but we have some neighborhoods where it's just deteriorated pipes. They have some yellow water issues. We have to do a lot of flushing. You know, so this is a long-term, long-term project. We're going to work on getting all 80 miles of this replaced over time. We're, Department of Water Resources, they've been cost sharing on a couple of projects with us, so we're going to continue to seek those funds. We get a 60/40, 60/40 cost share on those. And then our 40% will match with drinking water SRF loans through the Department of Environmental Quality. That's a 2% interest loan for up to 30 years. So it's, the SRF loans, they're backed with some federal infrastructure dollars, so they come with some federal, you know, strings attached. We have to apply David Bacon, yeah, David Bacon, or wages, and Davis Bacon wages, and Build America, Buy America, some of these things. They're not too arduous in the water main projects. Most of that is plastic pipe, and it's built here in the country. We're currently working through a new rate model to make sure that we're building a sustainable funding plan, that we're not going to get into a situation where we suddenly have to jack up rates. Want to make sure that the rates that we're charging are, you know, have this set aside so that we can continue to make these debt payments and continue to get this cast iron pipe replaced. So just for instance, in 2024, we're on track to probably award somewhere around about $10, $10, $11 million between three different water main projects, and that's going to replace about 2.5 to 3 miles. So when you start looking at 80 miles, this is a multimillion-dollar, multi-year project. So we'll continue to knock these off when we can and have funding available and continue to move forward. So the big thing is we need to find a balance between funding and then the neighborhood inconveniences. We can, when we come into a neighborhood, we blow up the roads, sidewalks, we have to do ADA improvements. So they're very impactful and a major pain on the neighborhood. We try to get in and out as quick as we can. Things always happen. There are some inconveniences to the homeowner. So we got to kind of size these projects so that we're not taking out every road in a huge quadrant of Minot. So this is basically what we've done here, is we've broken all of the cast iron out into zones, of replacement zones, basically, and target, historically, we used to spend about $2 million a year, and we used to target based on whatever the water department used to tell us, like, oh, we did three repairs in, on this street in northeast Minot. So we would do a block of water main repair there, and then we would do, you know, two blocks in southwest Minot. So mobilization and things like that were killing us on doing these small little projects all over town. So we've taken a different approach. We're basically doing multi-blocks within an area, and then we're doing basically a smaller project where we're responding to some of these hot-button issues to help with water breaks and things. One of the things we have to worry about or be concerned with is scope creep. Once we get into some of these old neighborhoods, it's not just the water main that needs to be replaced. We have undersized storm drains, we have sanitary, old clay tile sanitary sewers that have root infiltration, cracks, collapses. You know, so we've been doing a lot of sewer lining. We go into a lot of these neighborhoods ahead of the water project, line the sewers, and then come in the next year or two years later and do a water main project. So, infrastructure, it's a big deal. There's a lot of it out there, and it's expensive to maintain. I gave a presentation to council a few months ago, so I won't get too far into the lead service line replacement, but this is definitely an issue that we will be working through. There's a lot of new federal rules that came down on the lead and copper rule. You know, so we basically have to come up with a 10-year replacement plan to get, the ultimate goal is to get all the lead out of the ground, get it eliminated from houses and things of that nature. So we're working on an inventory. We have a long way to go on that. There's a lot of new sampling requirements. There's a new trigger level for lead that'll probably push us into mandatory replacements, and then a lot of increased public notification. So this is a snapshot of our GIS map. Everything in blue is known to be non-led. Everything in red is known to be lead. Everything in gray is unknown. So that's the issue. We're trying to get these unknowns to knowns. So we have about 8,000 unknowns. And they're assumed lead. When we send in our inventory, they're assumed to be lead. So if we get pushed into a 10% mandatory replacement, we're going to have to do 10% of 1,000 instead of 10% of, say, you know, maybe we only have 1,500 out there. So we're going to have to put some projects together. There is some state of North Dakota funding, 66% grants to do either in-home inspections, or we can do excavation. So we can basically dig up a curb stop. There, at that point, we can see what's on the city side of the curb stop and what's on the homeowner's side of the curb stop. So we'll continue to be working through some of these projects as well. Fleet maintenance, we are in the process of splitting. We currently have Brian Harinka is our shop and transit superintendent. We've created a fleet superintendent position. I believe there's interviews on Thursday? Correct. So we're currently working through that. We'll get the fleet manager on board, and one of his important tasks will be to start working on vehicle and equipment replacement fund. Historically, every department has kind of, you know, looked out for their own equipment needs. They put it in the budget when they need it. So, and it leads to a lot of instability in budgeting. You have, you know, me, for instance, you know, we can put in a compactor out at the landfill, it's about $1.3 million. That definitely takes a hit on a budget. You know, so we've been leasing some of this equipment. So it'll be up to the fleet manager to kind of develop, build a plan so that we start planning on a vehicle's replacement the day we take possession of it, and we'll start putting money away shortly over the lifespan of that vehicle so that we have funding set aside when it's ready to be replaced again. And then it should stabilize budgeting fairly significantly. I did want to touch on a few things in the customer satisfaction survey. This one is on trash collection, and I'm actually, you know, proud of our department, and I'm happy that the city has seen the benefit that we've put in. We made some major changes to garbage collection 2017. And those of you that were on council back then, I think you would all remember that there were a lot of people that told us this was never going to work in Minot, North Dakota. You know, and it works. People are happy with it, and the project is going pretty well. Still areas for improvement, so we'll continue to try to tweak, you know, our processes and things that we have going on, and try to make, try to make things better, provide that excellent service that Tom mentioned. Curbside recycling, again, a lot of people that, you know, said it wasn't necessary or is a waste of money, gets pretty good satisfaction ratings, so we're happy to see that as well. It's hard to read, but the cemetery gets high ratings. We're very proud of our cemetery. We put a lot of time and effort into keeping our cemetery grounds looking nice and clean, and it's, we're glad to see it's appreciated. Snow removal is obviously an area of concern with the citizens. There's clearly a desire for some improvements, mainly from what I see in the comments is, it appears that there's a general want for, basically for us to get into the residential areas sooner. You know, so right now, if we get, say, about a six-inch snow event, we can get through the entire city in, you know, probably about 70 hours, call it three days. You know, so there's a desire to speed that up. So basically, I think what Tom's plan is with Brian, once we get him up to speed, is this summer to sit down with Kevin and basically, let's do a review of our snow plan. If there's things that we can do internally to increase efficiencies, let's pursue those. If we need to get contractors on board to start working on residential simultaneously, that's obviously a resource issue and probably take more money. But let's explore these things. We'll bring them to council as part of the budget, and if it's something, something that you guys feel is important, or we want to put out there, that's something that we'll make sure it's available to you. I think that is about all that I had.
Any questions from the council?
Jason, how much of the, when you talk about replacing lead or cast iron pipes, how much, how many miles of that, with that 80 miles or whatnot, coincides with future road replacements? Are you guys always trying to kind of piggyback those? And when we're going for a road replacement, we're doing one or the other?
It's definitely a planning exercise that we go through. Unfortunately, there's a lot of bad cast iron under good roads, you know, so we're trying to hold off on those areas. You know, so we're working with Lance on how to make that work out best. There are some different technologies available. We've done some pipe bursting to, I would say, moderate success. I don't know that we've completely hit on all the things that we want in our specs to make sure that goes the way we want it. One of the issues with pipe bursting is, so basically, you have to, you only have to dig up basically an entrance and an exit pit, and then you have to excavate at each service line to reconnect. So what you end up is, instead of like a 12-foot wide, 10-foot wide trench down the street, now you have little holes, and then you end up with differential settlement, and it usually creates some ride quality issues. You know, there's ways that that can be remedied. We could do a bursting project. We could patch those back in, let them settle out for a year, and then Lance could come in with like a milling overlay or a skim coat and a chip seal. So we're working through some of those issues.
Okay. And then, just one more. As far as, we talk about flood control. We always talk about, you know, when it's done and it comes off the books, but there's still the operation and maintenance. Any clear view on what that cost, that ongoing cost will be?
You know, right now, we have a $2 per month bill on the utility bill. That's not going to cut it. I don't remember what that raises. I think it's, you know, $200,000 or $300,000. Every time we build a new phase of flood control, that maintenance cost just goes up a little higher. So that's definitely something that we need to continue to work on to make sure that we have that funding mechanism so that we can continue to do the maintenance on these projects.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Jason, do you have any sense of what the new EPA PFAS rules are going to do to your water business?
At this point, I'm hoping nothing. We've done testing. We don't have PFAS present in our drinking water. It's generally not present in surface water, so I don't think it's going to be present in Lake Sakakawea. So at this point, I'm hoping it doesn't have any large effects.
Scott? Jason, talking a little bit about snow removal, and I agree, every time we have a major snowstorm, we hear from people that, you know, want their areas cleared quicker. What is, so tell me, somebody asked me last year, so last year, we added some heavy equipment operators in other areas. Who is actually removing the snow, and what are they doing when they're not removing snow? Can you kind of walk me through that process a little bit?
Yeah, so basically, Kevin has a crew of, I think it's about 28 or 30 employees in the street department. And yeah, their job, you know, they have other winter activities when it's not snowing. We go down on the dead loops and clear trees. You know, we do what we can to find work to do during the winter, and then it's those employees then that they mobilize and run the sanders and the equipment when we're doing snow removal.
Steve, anything? Jason, cast iron, how much, I mean, do you have a, do you have a plan? How many miles do you try to take out on an annual basis?
You know, we're dealing with, you know, inflationary costs and things of that nature. So, you know, I think this year, this year is the biggest replacement project that we've done. You know, so we're getting a feel for what it's costing. I think we're probably going to have to go higher than the 10 that we did this year, probably get up into that 10, 15, try to do, so what we did is we had a consultant do two projects. They're both about $4 million apiece. And then my staff internally, we have a project, a project manager and some staff, so we designed about a $2 million project. So to do any more, we'd probably have to have a consultant design like a third, probably, and that would probably get us in the neighborhood. For about that $4 million, it does about a mile. So that's about where we're at.
Can you talk a little bit about funding? How much of your funding comes from the general fund? How much of it, you know, attached to property taxes? How much of it, you know, is federal funding, state funding?
So in my current role as utilities director, zero comes from the general fund. It is all utility-based. It all comes off the utility bill. We're funded with fees. Brian, on Brian's side of the house, he has a storm sewer. A storm sewer is enterprise. So the rest, I won't say the rest of them are all general fund. The property, or the cemetery, I think that's funded with about a half, a half a mil to make them whole. The rest is funded with rates. Yeah, property maintenance, shop, transit. Transit has a lot of federal funding that comes into it. Street department, property maintenance, and those are all general fund, general fund funded.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
I know that some cities, particularly Grand Forks, I think, have a sales tax separately or specifically allocated toward infrastructure. With the kinds of challenges you're presenting to us with the backlogs that you and Lance have identified, you know, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. And realistically, in terms of staffing and engineering and planning, this is going to take decades to fix. And we're not alone. As I've said before, we're not alone among cities in the United States. I think we're probably average from what you're telling me in terms of infrastructure that hasn't been kept up. What are your thoughts about that? I mean, we all want to keep the property tax low, obviously, and what would you think, though, of setting up or looking to set up a special sales tax portion to try to whittle away at this infrastructure situation?
Yeah, I mean, sales taxes, you know, it's never popular. You know, no taxes are popular. You know, I guess the unfortunate part is, you know, along with all of our regular infrastructure issues, we're dealing with two legacy projects, being NOS and flood control, which are both taking up sales tax money. You know, so if we can get those projects knocked out, we could obviously start reallocating some of those funds toward some of those funds toward, toward infrastructure improvements, which I think would be a great idea, but we're just-
With flood control, you're talking about a decade.
Yeah, we're, we're away, yeah. And the, and the plan is that once, once we basically get our obligation to NAS-
That'll help.
-paid for, we would dedicate that, I think that's been the, the, the talk historically is that we want to rededicate that to flood control. You know, so yeah, it's going to be a while.
I'm sorry, to flood control?
What's that?
Rededicate NAS to flood control?
Yeah, at least portions of it, I know that, that's, I think that's been talked about. Am I the only one that has heard that?
No, that's right.
Okay. Yeah, there, there was some, there was some talk about that. We, we only have a half cent going to, to flood control right now.
Right, but I think we're looking also at hundreds of millions of dollars. And, you know, and that's something will be, a topic for discussion later, but I'm almost wondering if, because we're so dependent on the state and the federal government for flood control, I mean, our sales tax is a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, right.
It almost makes more sense to dedicate that to infrastructure and fix things up and so people's, you know, alignment doesn't break on their cars and stuff. You know, I don't know, and it'll be an interesting question in terms of the financial, financial predictions, you know, what, you know, 20 million or whatever it brings in, what that would do. I mean, it, it seems that it would do a lot for infrastructure and people would notice it, whereas flood control, we're again at the mercy of Bismarck and Washington. And, you know, we need to pull our fair share, pull our weight, but-
Right.
It almost seems like something more achievable would be, would be worth looking at, but-
Yeah, and the other thing to keep in mind though is if, if we're going down to Bismarck and asking for money, we need to make sure that we have the cost share then to match that.
Right, right.
So that, it's, again, it's, it's balancing these, these huge projects with what's available. You know, as long as we continue to get some cost share dollars through DWR on water main projects, you know, they're covering 60% or 60% of these projects, this is great. You know, so, so I can do a lot of work with that, low interest loans, you know, so, you know, nobody take, likes to take on a lot of debt, but when you're taking on, you know, I, I just saw an interest rate the other day for a piece of equipment at 6.3% and we can borrow money for two through the state, so that's, that's a great deal.
So I guess what I'm hearing now that I haven't quite appreciated is the extent to which we're bogged down financially and, and time and expertise wise in legacy projects. I mean, they're obviously critical, we don't want another flood, but they just chew up everything.
Definitely, yeah.
I appreciate that eye opening.
Yeah, not a problem.
Anything else from the council?
Paul? Real quick, Jason, we talk about the ongoing cost of, of operation and maintenance. Not all flood control projects are within the city of Minot. Are we still going to be the ones maintaining them? Or is that going to be county, is that going to be the jurisdictions in which they are?
Ward County Water Resource, or, you know, I shouldn't, Ward County will take care of the projects that are outside of Minot. You know, there, you know, there's bridges and there'll be some flood control up in Mole Hall and that would be Ranville County, I believe. You know, so those, those water resource districts will take over the maintenance, those issues that are within their county.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from the candidates? Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Jason, just a step deeper on NAS, so I think you said that we're substantially complete. I mean, there's, the major projects are done. So what now, what now does it look like for winding that down? Because we do have a big portion of one of the sales tax pennies dedicated to that. And so at what point does the council need to start considering action? Because there's no sunset on that as far as I know. We have to take action to change the allocation.
We just signed the, the new finance agreement with the state of North Dakota. So basically, we're, we're, we're dedicated to pay our share of basically like these last five projects that need to be completed. So there is a sunset on it. It's, Dave, do you remember what the number was? Yeah, so we, we think we should be done paying the NAS sales tax and NAS by about 26, 27-ish maybe?
So there, there actually is a built-in sunset?
Yeah, there is.
So what, what does the allocation do when that occurs? What, maybe Dave needs to-
That'll be up to council, I guess, to, you know, determine, determine where, where that gets allocated, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and candidates, there was a provision in the sales tax ordinance that authorized the finance director to reallocate some of those funds to the NAS project to finance that project through completion. Once that project is completely finished and financed, that allocation that is being directed towards NAS goes back to the original allocation of the sales tax spending, which would be infrastructure, property tax relief, and flood control.
Anything further? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I guess at this time, we load up?
We're going to go drive around.
Go for a ride.